Grand West Village and Mountain View Village as well as July. We will start the co-swap crews will start on CMC campus and around the community field area, so.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Can I share a feeling?
None for me.
Okay, just a couple key informational items, just wanted to recognize the significance of Juneteenth. The county was not in a place where we were able to put this on our annual resolution. To recognize this as a county holiday and follow suit with federal and state holidays. But we have conveyed and communicated the importance of today to our county employees and will be mindful of looking at our resolution going forward. Just wanted to thank everyone that came out for community cleanup a couple of weekends ago. It was a huge success. And so it's always great to have those programs available and thank you to everyone that came to the library fundraiser as well. It sounded like that was also very successful, so. Tomorrow, we will have a special meeting with our transit consultants to move forward with the next step of our transit planning. So just wanted to put that out there that that will happen tomorrow and if anyone has any questions to please contact me, I'd be happy to chat through that. So that's all I've got. Any commissioner's clarifications?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Public comments and items not listed on the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak on issues not on the agenda are requested to send a message in the chat section or raise your hand on the Zoom. Or in person and we will call upon you in order. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Action if required will be assigned then to county staff. For matters on the agenda, public input will be heard prior to a vote if warranted. At the discussion of the board, so if there's anyone here with us that has any public comment, can you please put it into the chat or raise your hand on the Zoom? Sure, sure. Okay. I don't either. Okay, so with that, then we will move into new businesses. Is there anyone in the audience with us today that has any public comment to make? For items not on the agenda? Alright, so we will move into new business number one on our agenda for new business is the Colorado Department of Human Services Colorado Childcare Assistance Program Memorandum of Understanding. This also CCAP program, so Janine is with us on the Zoom and I will have her talk us through this agenda item.
Hey, thank you. So this is pretty standard. This is our MOU between Lake County and the department Colorado Department of Human Services to operate a CCAP program in Lake County. And outlines the responsibilities of both parties, how our work is measured, the role of oversight that has and it feels like we sign this almost every year, but it says it expires in 2025. So I think I had sent it to Chris to see if she had any concerns and hadn't heard anything back, but I know it's a there's a lot to to go through, but it is required to be sent back by the 25th? Does anybody have any questions about it?
Any, any questions?
I didn't.
No, I don't have any questions either, Janine. I'm wondering if you can just talk through for us briefly what the CCAP program does.
Yeah, good, I can do that. So CCAP stands for Child Care Colorado Childcare Assistance Program. And it's an income-based program that is considered a work support so that families who are within certain income guidelines either get their childcare fully paid for or paid for, partially paid for, there's what's called a parent fee based on income. And the, the only challenge we've had in Lake County is that we don't have any openings right now for providers that have CCAP slots. So we haven't been able to utilize it as much. I think that, you know, we're on our path to changing that and gradually, but it can be used for home care providers if they are, are at least exempt and they are set up as CCAP providers. And it's also available for institutional providers as needed, but there's a process to get set up and become a CCAP provider. So we are allocation of CCAP funds is about $183,000 for Lake County. We have not spent much of that in direct payment assistance this year. But again, we are able to do that as soon as we have those slots available.
Thanks, Janine. I just want to, for transparency sake, as the president of the Bright Start Board, we are, we will be eligible to take CCAP, but we do not participate in the CCAP program right now just because we have a lot of new staff and a lot of new board members and so we're hoping by the end of the summer to have a training with human services to be able to utilize CCAP, but I don't believe that to be a conflict in this, in this case, just wanted to be transparent about that. Okay, thank you, Janine. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks.
I looked at the, I didn't see the issues with it. And Janine, on your initial comment about that it runs through 2025 and has a vision that says that it's runs that long, could it be reaffirmed by amendment each year?
Okay, yeah, it does feel that's, that's how all, all of our programs are. We we approve it every year, although the funding and I think probably has more to do with the funding stream that lasts until 2025. We, we actually just a slight side note, are not quite sure what's going to be happening with CCAP over the next several years with the new Office of Early Childhood. The Department of Early Childhood that's been formed now, that was part of the challenges that there will be, that will include CCAP and so we don't know if that will stay in the, is in the existing structure or if it will change, but if anything happens, it would be probably a couple of years out, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I don't have any, any other questions, comments, or concerns on this agreement. Is there any other discussion amongst my board members or do we feel ready for?
I don't have, I don't have any questions on the agreement. I just, I think I just maybe have more questions on any way to help support DHS or providers to become eligible and to promote the opportunity. If that's something to do for individuals and families to encourage in, in home providers or yeah, I would just love to learn more from you, Janine, in general, so. We can.
Yeah, I think the biggest challenge has been that you have to be an exempt provider, which is that entry level step. You don't have to be licensed, but you have to be at least exempt. And we don't have too many. And you have to want to open some CCAP slots. So most providers in our county today are full with private pay slots. And because there's just so few available, it does take a little bit more to manage the CCAP slots to Kayla's point. It's, it's a little involved. But, but it is well compensated, so it's not as though the rate is, it's we pay market rate, but it is just a little bit more involved. So providers who are already at max capacity or, you know, like if there is a home provider and they have maybe five slots and they've got 10 people on a waiting list already. The, to open that up. So it's been the challenge as a whole is to just increase provider numbers and capacity as a whole as a first step, so, yeah.
Thanks, Janine. I appreciate it. All right, anything else?
No.
All right, I will accept a motion then.
A move that we approve. MOU with Colorado Childcare Assistance Program.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on the motion on the floor? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
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 All right, thank you very much, Janine. We appreciate you being here today.
Yeah, thank you.
Number two is a contract between Mike McCarg of Arkansas Valley Consulting LLC and the Lake County Board of Commissioners for the position of Ark- Upper Arkansas Emergency Preparedness Response Coordinator presented today by County Manager Tim Bergman on behalf of Colleen Nielsen, the Director of Lake County Public Health. So Tim, I will let you talk us through this agreement for services.
Sure. So this contract is, as you stated, with Mike McCarg, Ark Valley Consulting LLC, which will be it is grant funded by Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant, the Epidemiological and Laboratory Capacity Grant, and the Colorado Workforce Grant for an amount not to exceed $85,000 for the year. The work, the scope of work that he will be performing is essentially is acting as our Public Health Emergency Preparedness and Response Coordinator. So we're, so complete Public Health Emergency Preparedness scope of work, which requirements under Emergency Services Function Eight at the federal level, he will also facilitate those meetings. The work on strategic plans, trainings and exercises for public health. And then other EPR concerns or issues and projects as needed. He will continue work with COVID planning, training and response efforts. Will act as our Public Health Representative for the South Central Region Healthcare Coalition. He'll have oversight over the Public Health Communications position. And provides, he will also provide strategic standing for public health. And then will be available to myself and other Lake County Public Safety Leadership and Entities on as needed basis for advisory consulting on emergency response. And it has been reviewed by legal.
Okay. Missions, any questions, clarifications for Tim on this contract? Or funding to cover the costs of the contract?
Uh, no, I think that's all pretty clear, but kind of following our last conversation with Public Health and Work Session as well. As far as Mike acting as a county representative on the Healthcare Coalition, could you arrange with him like a pretty clear expectation of communicating what it is that we are, you know, I mean, right, like what that group needs from the county? Yeah, and like how we I mean, I think in general, we just have been talking about trying to be better participants and it's great that he'll be able to fill in some gaps that we have in vacancies currently, but to really make sure we have a meaningful understanding of, of what that group is, how the county benefits, how the county should best participate. And then what we're asking McCarg to represent on our behalf would be great.
Okay. I think that pretty much sums it up. I don't have anything else to add to that. Commissioner Fieker, do you have anything?
Yeah, no, that's a good point. I was just, sorry, I was just looking at, I apologize for not looking this over. Is it clear? Is it sort of the day-to-day coordination with Colleen, the Director of Public Health, or is it reporting to you, Tim, as County Manager?
It is to our Public Health Director, Colleen Nielsen, and then as needed by me as you're acting on emergency and.
So between, yeah, you and Colleen will split that based on kind of the list of responsibilities that he'll be tackling?
All right, I don't think that we have any further questions or concerns on this contract, so I'll look for a motion.
I'll move to approve the contract with Mike McCarg of Ark Valley Consulting LLC.
Okay.
Well, second.
All right, any further discussion on the motion on the floor?
Nothing for me, thank you.
For me?
Okay, thank you very much. All those in favor?
I.
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 Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Number three is a contract between the Upper Arkansas Area Agency on Aging and the Lake County Board of County Commissioners for 2022-2023. Space Agreement for the Nutrition Program at the Leadville Senior Center, and this is presented to us by Tim Bergman on behalf of Tom McConne, Director of Upper Arkansas Area Agency on Aging. So Tim, I will let you talk us through this as well.
Sure, so this is an agreement with the county and our senior center and the Upper Arkansas Area Council of Governments Area Agency on Aging Nutrition Program. So essentially, it is an in-kind agreement that the county will provide the space, AKA our senior center and kitchen. And then the AAA, the Area Agency on Aging, will provide the food meals for seniors three days a week.
Okay.
And we will have review.
Thank you. I don't have any questions on this as this is just something that we annually do.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't have any questions other than, again, I guess just to be kind of apprised or more in the loop from Judy, our Aging Wellness Coordinator on the utilization of the program and, and what's happening at the Senior Center and if we can all you know, if it might be worth a conversation across departments and whatnot to strategize on promoting and reaching out to the community, getting more folks to utilize our Senior Center.
Yeah, yeah, I think that sounds good. Yeah, and they may, make sure it doesn't get too tucked into the broader public health like sort of updates. I mean, just since it's its own building and
It's its own program.
Be good to do that as, yeah, maybe kind of as part of the facilities assessment we're doing, like what shape is that building in and is it serving the needs or?
Sounds good.
I'll move to approve the contract with the Upper Arkansas Area Agency on Aging and the Lake County Board of Commissioners.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion on the floor?
Thank you.
Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
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 Hey. Thank you very much. So now we'll move into number four, which is a land use file, and we have Marla Bond here with us from Community Development's Department. You can sit wherever you would prefer, whatever's most comfortable for you. If you want to bring the, the resolution and up to me and statement of motion, I can read, I can read the resolution into the record if you'd like, or if you'd like to, you are welcome to do that as well.
I appreciate the offer.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Marks.
Yeah, no problem. Okay, so this is File 22-10. RM Rezone Twin Lakes, Colorado, H1251. We have, as I said, Marla Bond from Community Planning and Development with us. So I will read into the record the statement of motion, which is file number 22-10. At its June 13th, 2022, joint public hearings, the Lake County Planning Commission made, seconded and approved by a roll call vote of four members in favor and one member in opposition, the following motion. The motion, motion having been made by Howard Tritt and seconded by Bryce Erlich. I, Howard Tritt, move, I'm sorry. Will the Planning Commission recommend approval to the Lake County Board of County Commissioners of File Number 22-10, RM Twin Lakes Rezone? And further finding that the proposed rezone is determined to be consistent with the Lake County Comprehensive Plan. That's all the same emotion. Okay, and so I'll just read this resolution into the record and then we can have discussion with Marla and Tim or Chris as we see necessary. So this is a resolution to rezone the properties known as parcel eight, tracks three A and three B, EE Hill Estates and parcel eight track number one. Number 02257, part of the Starlight Plaza, Twin Lakes, Colorado, H1251. From RM Urban Multifamily Residential to RC Recreational. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners and the County of Lake State of Colorado Board is vested with administering the affairs of Lake County, Colorado pursuant to state statutes. And whereas pursuant to CRS 2921021, the legislature has determined that in order to provide or planned and orderly development within Colorado, that broad authority, board authority must be provided to local governments, including counties to plan for and regulate the use of land within their respective jurisdictions and whereas pursuant to CRS 30-281111, the legislature has determined that local county governments may make a zoning plan for zoning all or any parts of the unincorporated territory within such county. And whereas the county is in receipt of a land use and development application, File 22-10, proposing the rezone of 27 acres described as parcel eight, tracks three A and three B, EE Hill Estates and parcel eight, tract one, EE Hill Estates, number 2202257. Part of the Starlight Plaza from RM Urban Multifamily Residential to RC Recreational. And whereas that parcels have met all of the submitted requirements pursuant to Lake County Development Code Section 3.13 rezoning and whereas RM Urban Multifamily Residential zoning intent and density within the respective subject location is determined to be non-consistent with the vision in the Lake County Comprehensive Plan. And whereas the location of the parcels in, is in compatibility with the intent of RC recreational zoning and harmonious with the surrounding area. And whereas the Lake County Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners held a joint public hearing on this matter on the 13th of June 2022. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners has considered the recommendations of the Lake County Building and Land Use Department and Planning Commission. And now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, County of Lake and State of Colorado that pursuant to Section 3.13.3 of the Lake County Land Development Code. Section one, the proposed rezoning is found to be consistent with and in compliance with all parts of the Lake County Comprehensive Plan. Section two, this resolution shall become effective upon the signing of the board by this by the board of this resolution and the subsequent recording of it. Moved, read, and adopted by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lake State of Colorado at its regular meeting held the 20th day of June 2022. And then we also have here the official action record of the rezone from Urban Multifamily Residential to Recreational. And with that, you can have any questions of Marla or Tim or Chris on the proposed rezone? And I'll start with Commissioner Marks.
Sure, I don't, I wasn't actually present at the hearing, but I did listen to that and had spoken with staff prior to the June 13th hearing. I did not have any questions for staff at that time. Seems pretty straightforward and I don't think any, any other surprising inquiries came up during the hearing that I heard. As the resolution states, you know, this rezone is in harmony with the surrounding recreational zoning and furthermore a adjacent, well, a number of adjacent properties and parcels that are either under conservation now or working to be put under conservation easement. And so one thing that staff had communicated to all of us through the period of time here was that this multi, multifamily residential zone prohibits anything less than pretty high density, which is really kind of bizarre. So that is why, you know, the effort is made in this, on these parcels and, and, and in other areas around this area to, to change that for lower density, which makes a lot of sense to me.
Okay, I, go ahead. I'll let you go and then I'll finish. Sorry.
None agree with everything that, that Sarah said, Commissioner Munt said, and also I mean, to me, like something that I would look at with any rezoning is like, is trying, you know, trying not to get like usages, you know, to adjacent or approaching on each other and this doesn't do that. I think as you said, it's, it's shouldn't really have been that way in the first place and much more in, you know, in harmony with other rezoning, you know, and what's adjacent in that script, so.
Yeah, Commissioner, Commissioner Fieker and myself were both present at the hearing on June 13th. The hearing seemed very straightforward. There was hardly any questions or contention or anything like that and just agree with the points made of the, the harmonious feel that this rezone brings to that area. So no questions from me.
Do we know what resolution number this is?
2218.
Okay, great. Okay, I missed that. Excuse me, thank you. Um. Marla, do you have anything else for us?
I do not.
Okay. All right. With that, then I'll move to approve resolution, resolution 2218 regarding File 2210.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on the motion on the floor?
Nothing.
Okay. Seeing then, all those in favor?
I.
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 All right, thank you, Marla. Appreciate it. And moving on, number five, special event permit applications presented by Marla Bond of Community Planning and Development. Two, four on the list today. We have the Level Race Series Silver Rush permits, the Level Race Series, Level Stage Race permits, relay races, flaming foliage relay and Colorado High School Cycling League Cloud City Challenge. So Marla, if you'd like to present those to us and then we can go from there.
Thank you. The Silver Rush is working very diligently to comply with everything. Any particular concerns are addressed on here? It's all based on the race series planning meetings and no one has ventured anything as far as any problems, any foresight of issues. So I believe that they have everything managed well and are working well with the other agencies.
Okay.
Marla, I noticed in the marathon that happened last weekend, there was, the shuttling is new, is it not, of participants? Just great. It seemed to really reduce traffic and, and how, how do, did you get any feedback on how that worked and is that going to be something that we see through the race series?
That is their intention. They would like to help mitigate downtown a little bit and make it a little easier for people to come back and forth without the traffic. So I think it might be a very nice design for all aspects.
I just will say as a participant, we did see, we did see the shuttle coming to and from. And the parking lots were full at Community Field and the high school, so I think that it was really heavily utilized, which was really great. And I just will also say from a participant standpoint, it was clean. There was not trash on the trail. They take that very seriously. The athletes take it very seriously. I did not see anything on the trails, nothing. So it was, it was really refreshing to see that from a participant point of view, so.
Our office had no complaints today to see this.
That's good.
Very nice to.
Good deal.
Um. I don't know for what it's worth, I, I am, I'm participating in one of the Silver Rush events. My husband is also participating in the Silver Rush event, just for transparency sake.
Good for you. Way to go.
I know, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that you're, don't need to mention that. That's, no, I, I just want to like, for transparency sake, like put that out there and I don't have anything to lose or gain by the application being approved or not. So it's fine.
So if you vote against it to see you don't have to run?
That's fine. I'm only doing the 15 mile bike ride, so, yeah. It'll be fine, so, okay. Do you want us just to vote on these all together like we did the last time or how do you want us to?
That would be fine if that works for you.
Okay.
However, you wish proceed.
Sure, so it would be the level race, it would be the Silver Rush and the stage race, those two?
And so the stage race, is there anything in particular with that application?
I think it was called out.
Okay. Just for transparency sake, I deserted my stage race entry. But my husband's just. I just got too much going on this summit to do all the things. I just got too much going on this summit to do all the things.
All right, I will move to approve the special event permit for the Silver Rush level. The Silver Rush of the Level Race Series and the Stage Race.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Nothing for me.
For me.
All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
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 Right, thanks, Myla. Relay Races, Flaming Village Relay.
Flaming Village is a reoccurring event, they come through every year, they seem to be very respectful. Of everyone and they always apply very early, so that's very nice. Their issue this year was there was a possibility that County Road five A may be closed for culvert damage. They are working and have promised to have an alternate in that happens.
Okay. I don't have any concerns on this.
No, I don't either, but that just makes me realize, which I know Anne Schneider's. In constant communication with Public Works, but as we do have a few of those locations queued up over the next few years. Those, that should be communicated back and forth between departments, so we can give people a heads up on detours or alternative routes. I don't think that's happening on five A, so hopefully that won't be an issue for them this year.
I did reach out to Public Works and they said that they would make sure that anything that comes forward, they would let us know time. So we can pitch back. We just put it out there in case something was gonna happen, it's always nice to have a backup.
Yeah, yeah. My understanding is that we'll look, we'll pursue the engineering for that project this year, but wouldn't, aren't gonna. Implement or do construction on that.
Okay.
This year unless something, unless there was a failure and there was something urgent that needed to happen, but I don't believe that's going on, so.
Okay.
All right, I'll move to approve the Flaming Foliage Relay Event Permit.
A second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Me, thanks.
None for me either, I guess just thanks for. If you can extend our thanks to the applicant for being very cognizant of. Preparing and having those conversations and getting their application in early so that they can plan around any. Public Works construction, we really appreciate that.
I will do that.
Yep. All right, seeing nothing further, all those in favor?
I.
I.
I. Okay. And then Colorado High School Cycling League Cloud City Challenge.
This is also an annual event and they are very well organized, they come in with a medical plan and a great. Group of young people, they have requested two dates this year, so there is an August date and a September date and. Having no conflicts in some would be welcome.
Are those, is that an alternative date if the first gets canceled or are those two?
I don't have any questions or concerns.
No, I don't have any.
No.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the Colorado High School Cycling League Cloud City Challenge.
Oh, second.
All right, any further discussion?
No, thank you.
None for me.
I just wanna make sure that. This is, we are approving both dates with this application, okay. All right, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
I.
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 All right, thank you very much, Marla, we appreciate you being here.
Thanks, Marla.
And then number six is a discussion on the Colorado Department of Transportation, Multimodal Transportation and Mitigation Options Fund for Planning and Transit Projects in Lake County. And this discussion will be led by Commissioner Bieber, just wanna tag in that tomorrow during our transit. Meeting with our transit consultants, Jason and Sydney, but they'll walk us through options for transit specific with the MMOF. Funding, so any questions that we might come up with today, we can ask of them tomorrow, they've had a pre-application meeting with C dot. And myself, and so we feel pretty comfortable and confident in the pots of money that are available for us for transit specific projects. But I'll let you go ahead and start, Jeff, and you can go from there.
Yeah, yeah, and if we wanna, I could, I email to the BOCC.
Sure.
The attachments we can put. Okay, are folks on the Zoom seeing that?
Yes. It's on there. Yeah.
Scrolling down, my computer will not. So I think, and the issue for discussion is just there, these opportunities to apply for. Some of these MMOF. Grants that includes, these are C dot grants, they include both. Sort of planning and engineering, as well as actual infrastructure and implementation, which will be what the transit, the transit is going for, but I think this one. Is to try to get some of the. Design work on areas of twenty four that come through town. Since, you know, since this is a state highways, you gotta work with C dot, we can't just do what you like on a county road. So. The. You know, there are lots of different pots of money that C dot has, you know, for, for grants. So this MMOF isn't the only pot of money, I think for me. If you had some questions, I'll sort of, I sort of address, I can start to address some of those. I think one, you know, so. The, let's see, this. This set of work, let's quickly describe it, so I think there, there are a couple of areas on, on twenty four. That are either current concerns or will, will be concerned, so up here, once labeled area two, that's that corner that goes through. Mount View Village. Has been sort of a known issue where a forty five mile an hour blind curve separates a community. And people cross all the time to get to friends and neighbors or to catch a bus. School bus stops on both sides, anyway, that's sort of a known issue. This late area labeled one in the bottom right, I think, you know, this is an area where we're seeing a lot of growth. Just cut off. So, so this is rail yards down here.
Okay.
And, you know, rail yards one, rail yards two is up here behind O'Reilly's, fading west is here. And then we also have, you know, not permitted yet, but you know, there's. Conceivably pretty significant residential and mixed residential like commercial or, yeah, like small commercial. Up in this sort of Y of ninety one twenty four, and then also buildable land up here behind Safeway up on the hill, so, you know. Some of this may be further down the road, but we're seeing growth here, there are hundreds, I mean potentially. Over five hundred residential units in this area over the next coming, coming years. And I think. Least, my thought on trying to get some traffic engineering done on this. This strip, you know, right now it's four lanes, you know, four travel lanes, a center turn lane. Speed limit of thirty five, which is rarely adhered to, especially coming into town. With residential near, you know, coming in hundreds of units of residential. Need to both figure out the traffic access, but also pedestrian safety. And I think if we try to get ahead of that growth, as developers come in, we can get their access, you know, pedestrian access onto that. Spot, for example. Rail yards has a plan to like build a park up in behind O'Reilly's and connect through pedestrian access here. Right now, this is not a very pedestrian friendly access. Point, there's, you know, no bike lanes, limited sidewalk on one side, it truly gets the cars, and I think with. Those hundreds of units coming in would be great to sort of get ahead of that and not be here in ten years being like, oh. So I think that, you know, just overall is the intent, there's also. In, in getting some community input on these two ideas to bring to C dot. Some people, I like, this is the sort of CMC turnoff. Sorry, there was. Yeah. So there's just a lot of stuff going on at this intersection, you know, two crossings of Highway twenty four. You know, people, RV pump out backing up during the summer, you know, plans first expanding, this is a recreation, you know, asset. Affordable housing or other development coming in here. I think, and this is like a relatively small addition compared to like the hundreds of units, an existing problem, but it was flagged with community input as something that we could get some planning done.
See that flagged it?
Uh, no, like. Uh, E C and Main Street. Actually, to see who else.
Well, yeah, like you said, there's a lot of developing, expanding or enhancing.
Yeah.
Trailhead sanitation districts.
Yeah.
Proposed are.
Proposed or be dumped. Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and some of that, you know, like I know already sanitation is like trying to, you know, work with C dot. If this development happens, they need to work with C dot, but having sort of like an integrated plan for that intersection. With all those sort of conflicting uses.
Well, there's currently not a turn lane going into the ski hill.
Yeah.
Right, it's only a one-way turn lane going on to McQuessy.
I think it's the, yeah, I think, well, because I literally had it like face off with a car. Going into sanitation, there's not a turn lane for sanitation, but there is a turn lane for the ski hill. But then you conflict at sanitation with the people who wanna turn. Left on McQuessy heading north, and I was like, oh my goodness.
So if they pull over too. The north if these people pull over too soon into their turn lane.
Yeah.
And if you pull in too soon to pull into Dutch Henry.
Yeah.
So I think the. The opportunity with MMOF is they specifically include design work, it's a twenty five percent match. Yeah, I think in order of urgency. Well.
Sorry, I just wanted to see the links on the bottom. Okay.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
There, are there. I really liked the idea of being better prepared for other granting opportunities, I don't, I did not digest. The whole grant application and option enough. To have answered these questions, are there different pots of money in the MMOF where like if we are going for, if we consider transit? And then planning and perhaps, or would planning be an overall kind of catchall on transit and. Corridor and development improvement, and then also I had a question about, you know, any opportunity for like some of the. Maybe. Truck hauling routes that we might be suggesting and like some infrastructure.
Yeah, I didn't have a chance to follow up, I think if, if there are some maps or proposed routes, we can ask C dot whether they're. Whether they fall within them. Yeah, this avoids truck traffic where there are people. Seems like that would address pedestrian safety and sort of be eligible, so, and, and I think, yeah, that's something that's happening. You know, now and, you know, pretty soon, so I think we. Unless they say that's not eligible, we could certainly try to. Put that in, I also think, I mean, there's a lot in here, we don't have to do like all the planning, we can see what we get approved for. And do, you know, like the bottom half of area two first or something where the growth is coming in sooner.
Yeah, do we, what is, are you asking for a letter of support to like pursue and have pre-application meetings with C dot, or have you already done that a bit?
So we've already had a consultation with C dot folks and on the, on the transit one, so, and. So the regional folks. Both generally Karen Bordelay and then the person like on, I think, specifically. For MMOF, so we've done that, like initial consultation, it's not concurrents, because I don't think we're there yet. There's like different levels of consultation, so, but they're aware of this and didn't have any sort of. Questions or didn't tell us it wasn't eligible, so I think we have their concurrence. So I think the application just requires that. Either the BOCC or county manager, you know, given the authority, sort of, is aware of this. And. Yeah, 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 sorry, more than aware, I mean, aware and didn't say no.
To just continue the next steps and.
So the next step is to apply.
Okay.
And, you know, then get the, get the planning. Money with the twenty five percent local match for Lake County, so whatever level of. Planning work we wanted to do, you know, we would be on the hook for twenty five percent of it, so we can, we can control. How much money we ask for, C dot estimated that to do all the planning through this whole corridor. Could be over a million, I think.
Including the southern end of town.
Including the southern end of town and, so let me just refresh my memory, yeah, so they estimated one and a half.
I can, no, it's fine. Yeah.
Let me shut that.
Bless you.
So they estimated one and a half million of planning, that includes. Potentially two traffic circles around about ninety one twenty four and at the entrance to a new gateway project.
Oh.
Yeah, right, and, and those are, I think. Probably half of the planning money is, would be for those, because the, those are. Mostly the other stuff is probably restriping and traffic calming measures and sidewalks, not actually like new road construction, whereas the two traffic circles. Would be complete rebuild.
So could we? Have deeper conversations if you haven't already with C dot to say like, here, we'd be happy to do. Conceptual and maybe engineering on Mountain View Village and like get that in the queue for a county project and roundabouts perhaps. On the dime of development, like here's conceptual and like traffic studies, but not get too.
I, I also think because, so that, I, I think we can absolutely have that discussion with them, and I think in our application, we could put our, our, our order of priority. Or just not include. So I think the traffic circles, because they are completely rebuilding those roads, you know, would have a bigger hand. In, in doing those or put them on a developer.
Would those, would those come out of the development process as, because they'll have to have a traffic study no matter what when they put the development in.
Yeah, I'm not sure about ninety one twenty four, I think the second one, yeah, it's like second one for access into Gateway for sure. And I also think, once you, you know, once you start tearing up the actual roadway, C dot has a bigger hand in providing. Or trying to put it on a developer, so I don't think we need to see the proponents of that. That's a, that's a good question to discuss, and then another thing is like, so. I developed this presentation to try to get into the regional TPR money, that. Was not real, there was no more money, so that's not. Gonna happen for six years to get on the pipeline.
Yeah.
So. No, no, there were probably fifteen jurisdictions, but four additional projects, none got added to the park. Because, I mean. I don't know why the TPR chairs. Went through that, because.
Right.
Unless some jurisdiction took something off the list, there was never gonna be space for any of those.
To get on.
Doesn't, yeah.
Okay.
So that regional money is fully tapped out. But by, not orders of magnitude, but by multiples.
And so I just wanna make sure. And so I just wanna make sure that I'm clear in your tenure planning list. This doesn't include transit specific. This is only just planning and design for those roadway.
It it could easily include like bus shelters and like transit pullouts and like where a parking ride would go that. Roots, it wouldn't include like uh anything as big as like a transit station or. Or the vehicles or the operation. I think that's the other. But it should be meshed with that. And that was a point made that, you know, that there would be some. Yeah, wherever wherever the stops make sense, you know, or location of a parking ride to get rider to connect.
Or bus.
To the regional, yeah, bus shelters. You'd want that to be part of this planning so people can park or walk or bike to those.
Yeah. That's a a huge, the parking ride is huge.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
I we were trying to think about um like locations with. Like the recommendation of um, you know, that fixed deviated route system, like where could you put a parking ride?
Yeah.
And we're kind of limited, but there are some good places to put to put them, some good opportunities for places for them to be put. On the north and south end of town and then down in in the corridor so. But I think those are things that we can talk through tomorrow and talk about um the capital money that's available for us to do some of that.
Yeah.
Planning with transit.
And also quick, I mean, quick addition to that, the the site plan, the Justice Center has an idea, has a couple ideas for where bus stops could go. So so again, just like trying to get ahead of thing like that. So so that's the regional T P R pot of money. That I just don't think is an option for at least six years. Um. The other is regular repaving of the existing roads. That stretch a highway from Safeway out to the end of town. Um, that was paved in two thousand and five. It could be due in twenty thirty five, twenty thirty, twenty thirty. I mean, maybe earlier, I mean, you you can jump ahead if it's deteriorating faster, but that would be in their regular schedule twenty five years.
Replace that.
Yeah.
So if if that is scheduled to be replaced in twenty thirty, if we had any planning done, would they be able to incorporate for incorporate that into? Their planning um.
Yeah, for, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure. But I think, you know, for me, like to get C dot to play for the pay for the planning, we would be waiting. You know, seven years.
Yeah, I thought it was twenty years re repaving or whatnot, but maybe not for that.
Twenty, there goes twenty to twenty five.
Yeah.
And they they are trying to catch up with that with the rural paving that it is south of town. But they've been more in twenty five. It still be beholden to them, listening to us, like we wouldn't be the ones writing the scope of the traffic. Design work when that repaving happened. And it wouldn't necessarily include. You know, like a sidewalk or any, you know, or bus shelters or any of that work, it would. You know, I mean, they come in to repave what's there.
Right, right.
And you know, they they try to listen. I mean, they tried to widen shoulders south of town where they had right of way.
Yeah.
And stuff, but I think more. Far reaching. Stuff is not on on that, for example, like putting in um pedestrian crossings or. Repugees, like restriping could happen, you know, a little bit of changing. Shoulders could happen, but um. Significant stuff is, you know, again, we will be beholden to them, whereas if we get this M M O F planning grant, we write. We write that contract with the design work.
Okay.
I mean, assuming it's prepared. So I think, you know, I mean, we'll we will get there. You know, at some point we'll be on the T P R list or we can do our best with the repaving and it could. Be good, but I think having our own plan that we control. Especially if we focus on some of the more, you know, near term stuff first. Might not try to include the traffic circles.
Yeah, that was, do you wanna come up with like a priority list right now? Cause I was, all I was really gonna say was maybe putting. Personally, the traffic circles lower on the list because that is based on other community development impacts and. Also because there are some other like funding that could be layered or full distance, so like. The truck calling reroute or.
Yeah.
These, you know, the the now development on really hard area. Mount Massive.
Yeah.
Or Mount Mountain View Village being a continued conversation.
Yeah, uh I mean, I certainly think like the truck route, if we have some maps so that we could discuss, you know, kind of. Go back around um. And. Have have another discussion with the uh C dot folks we need to do the consultation with.
Okay.
So we can. See how much of all that is eligible.
Yeah.
And we can also get uh, I mean. We can't quote them, but they can give us a guesstimate of what the planning. Fine. Design. Cost.
Okay.
So we know what to ask for.
If we apply, are we are are we applying for a set dollar amount for the planning or what do we?
We we can ask, I mean, we could ask for a million and a half, but then we'd be on the hook for twenty five percent. So I think when we did the consultation. And and also we don't wanna be too greedy as one small county, cause there'll be other counties within the T P R region applying for the M M O F. Funds, we don't want to risk jeopardizing the transit. So I think they'd recommended sixty seven hundred thousand. A amount that would get a lot of the work done, um but not raise eyebrows.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's what I had in my head as an amount um. So we can ask about truck and then, yeah, priorities. I mean, I think, I mean, that corner on Mountain View. Is like a known issue and I also think relatively simple, cause you're probably not changing too many access points. It's really just trying to put in traffic calming. And then maybe. Like as much of. Right from Safeway on up as far as the money will go.
Yeah.
So.
Less the traffic circle.
Yeah, traffic circles bottom of the list. Maybe like some nod to like connectivity to those ideas. That's one issue is like if you have a traffic circle at ninety one, twenty four. And there's pedestrian crossings across there, what are they, what are they connecting to?
Yeah.
So you'd be thinking now about. If you're gonna try to have. Pedestrian walkways and bike traffic, which side of twenty four do you think about?
Right.
Or, you know, cause you do have that sidewalk on that side. But you could put a pedestrian bike lane through rail yards to invading west. If you thought about that now. Yeah, but you just need to or or go, I don't know.
Yes.
Not a traffic.
Yeah.
But yeah, I thought I think, yeah, we did nod to that connectivity. Also not to go too far in the weeds, like if if they ever really put a traffic circle on ninety one, twenty four, the idea would be to have a single lane. Coming out of that into town rather than the two lanes now that choke down.
So coming out of the ninety one. Twenty four intersection, it would just go into one traffic circle.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So right now you have two lanes coming in. They get choked down the traffic light to a single lane as you're coming into town. And a lot of people don't realize that. Yeah, yeah, but I mean, there is a little sign.
So there would likely be two north, south lanes and then turn lanes. With a right sizing of the road and striping. That come out of this.
Yes, I think I think the idea to match like you'd wanna not have it. You want this to merge into a single lane. And then I think the idea for making it, you know, ba- basically. I the and and this is like, I I was pretty impressed how um I feel like C dot has changed in the last three plus years. So their idea is that you could basically make that section from ninety one, twenty four into the Safeway traffic light. Function like downtown. So you'd have one travel lane each direction, twenty five miles an hour, and then the outer lanes would become dedicated. Striped merge and. Turn turn lanes. So you wouldn't, if you ever had to cross, you wouldn't be crossing against two oncoming travel lanes.
Just one.
Just one.
Yeah.
Um and then no one, you know, then everyone would know what lane they're in. So that's three lanes.
Okay.
But again, not a traffic engineer, but that, I mean, that to me. Sounds right. If you suddenly have, you know, five hundred to a thousand residential units up here and people potentially could. That's a lot of traffic, both have cars. Navigating, but you know, right now, no one really walks out there.
Is there, is there, is there a reason that there's not like a traffic circle concept around Mountain View Village or have they talked about that at all or?
Oh, on that. I think that's I, yeah.
I just am curious if that's something that's been considered because we've kind of considered all options out there, like a pedestrian bridge.
I I mean, I I I think the, I think they've. C dot likes the traffic circle here ninety one, twenty four, cause it slows people down to that, you know, under thirty miles an hour. Do you enter a town? I think, I don't I don't know, like for a small neighborhood, maybe that doesn't make quite as much sense, cause then you're gonna sneak right back up. Um, but maybe. Is that at least you slow down. I mean, I I mean, that's why they like traffic circles is because you physically have to slow down. You will crash.
Yeah.
And, you know. Well, I think people are realizing increasingly that like, you know, speed limit signs don't slow people down, risking crashing your car slows people down.
Have you had any feedback about anything about you there which like that?
No, not a traffic circle and and it might have just been that it's from multiple. Multiple roads feeding traffic and that spot doesn't necessarily have that, um but I think the. Median refuge in the middle and and something like that would would act like. Where you're going, I think, was the traffic calming and like reducing. And there's an online conversation about, you know, making it visually apparent that you're coming into a community and what does that look like? Even the uh owner putting up lights and signs and just making it more obvious that there's. You know, a neighborhood that you're driving.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's sort of the direction the C dot regional books were going more in is just sort of, yeah, like. Some kind of center lane stuff and then some stuff in the shoulders, so it just. You you know, either is feels visually narrower.
Yeah, yeah. I suspect as you kind of said, there's been a change in C dot and there being a lot more creative.
Yeah.
Thinking going on and things to throw out there other than. Well, you could pay for an off-highway crossing, pedestrian crossing, which is pretty challenging and pricey.
Yeah.
Our community.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, I really, I give C dot, cause I know I was like initially stealing myself for like hard conversations and and they like. You know, this section, this sort of Safeway to ninety one, twenty four, like. They launched into, oh, there's no point in having four travel lanes there, cause it chokes right down again, so you don't get more throughput.
Yeah.
Um, cause you have to get through town anyway. I mean, you start downtown.
Okay.
And ninety one and twenty four are single lane, so you're not, you know. Writing it out, doesn't help them on their.
Okay. So do we want to put together a list of priorities for us that we would apply for uh planning, funding for or what would be? The next step for us, just would we have to pass a resolution of some sort or what would that look like for us?
We do not need a resolution. God have that in writing from T P R.
Okay.
We just need, you know, someone to sign it, knowing that. That we have supported. So we can, we can schedule like another consultation meeting with the C dot folks. And show them like the the truck.
Yeah, you are. I mean, and I'm not anticipating that that might be. I I'm not sure if this is like planning up, I'm not sure, but I would love if you had the conversation with Public Works and Land Use and. Community development, just to just to check and verify, cause we do have some of that match funding there already and. But um.
Well, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I would say like. Very broad strokes, like everything around here, however you wanna prioritize the individual projects and then have those. Roundabouts last on that list and if it, if in your conversations with C dot and. Land use and public works, it makes sense to incorporate potentially um that truck hauling reroute. Um, I I hesitate to just say a truck reroute, cause that means a lot of different things to everybody and is not what we're really talking about, but. Um with some of the mining activity that we could anticipate. We're trying to just keep downtown safe and and those conflicts at a minimum um.
So so can I, cause actually I, sorry if I missed something in email, is this, is this a potential? Truck traffic coming off the east side that we wanna come off or is this? Where's the?
It could come from the south.
Okay.
The county and through to the I seventy corridor.
Gotcha.
And then I'm not sure what the east side. Indoor that, you know, existing tailings and material.
Yeah.
Is actually gonna be processed in county or trucked out, so that would also go through twenty four to the north um. But what I I guess my my ask is just to have those conversations and explore that and see how much sense it might make. And if not, then then fine, but I just would hate to miss any opportunity where we have some uh match funding. Already awarded with some of those culvert replacement projects.
Yeah.
That are in alignment with the potential alternative route. But not a showstopper for me, just, you know, make sure you don't miss an opportunity.
Yeah, yeah.
Agreed.
Yeah, and also I'll check back in um. And and just to see, yes, I mean, what's the best way to sort of bring this in terms of. Having, you know, we have this as a plan, being able to have that feed into discussions with developers and developments as they come in.
Yeah.
Section, cause I my hope is that we, you know, we have a blueprint, we know what to ask for.
Yeah.
And those developments can. Pay for a lot of that.
Right. And to that point, like if, you know, any level of. Preparation that we can put in place, any level, you know, if it's not conceptual design, but it's. I don't know, you know, non-engineering, but any level that it can help in those conversations.
Yeah.
Would be awesome.
Yeah.
Agreed. Yeah.
If you wanna juggle whatever you, you know, you think and will bring back to us like in the different areas, what level of detail and or.
Yeah.
When's the application due for this part of them?
I wanna say July one, I will double check on it.
Okay. I think ours is. It's fifteen. I think there's forty five days after July one.
Okay.
For us to apply for art for transit.
Okay.
And I don't know if it's the same, but um there's like a pre-application. Setting where you just pilot your project and then they. Just go through it to make sure it's good before finals, initial, some middle, so. But we'll learn more about that tomorrow. Um, I think this is great. I'm super excited about that. So thank you for bringing that to us.
Yeah.
Um, and then what's the next steps? Like you would apply for the application and apply for the grant money for planning and then they would tell you what you're awarded and you fit. Whatever we can in that into that award.
Yeah, I will get straight. So I don't have that. I I'll get straight on the deadlines, like when we might get the award and then I I actually have no idea on like when. When do we like, when do we actually need to provide that matching fund and like what the deadline is? I believe it's. Um, I think there's a, it's pretty fascinating, it's like twelve month limitation.
Okay.
Period, so.
And we can chat about this a little more in depth too, when that time comes, but I might propose that we don't, we anticipate. Matching dollars from the general fund. Necessarily Public Works, Bridge Funds.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree. Okay. Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Jeff.
Um, I don't have anything for around that and. That brings us to the end of our agenda. That brings us to the end of our agenda today. Um is there anything further for us to discuss at this point before we adjourn this afternoon?
Just gonna say really quickly, I appreciate the agendas, they're really organized today in terms of having like, you know, what the action was, like a little bit more description. Who is presenting uh was great, um because I knew what guy was presenting. Uh yeah, yeah, no, said by that, just making things clear, we're going.
Yeah, um I think that's just part of our organizational internal change, right? To be better at system building, external communication, then this has definitely been helpful. So we appreciate you. Claire and Tim for. Thanks, Claire, for um all the organization, is very much appreciated, so. All right, so uh we don't have anything else this afternoon, so we will adjourn at two seventeen P M. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you. Have a good day, guys.